We also have Councilman Jones, Councilman Jean Gregory, and Councilman Preston CJ Small with us, and our Councilman Harry Hareidge. So we have a safety record here. We've got, I don't know, let's see if you can time it and change this off.
Deputy to...
She's Deputy Executive Director of Public Works.
Deputy, Deputy Executive Director of Public Works, Sean Smith. We have the record of Public Works.
In the lab?
Public Services.
Public Services, Mark Asalo.
Who we met today?
Yeah, we introduced last week. But you were, yeah.
And we have various other members of the administration here as well as our staff.
Mr. Chairman. Hey, before I go further, this will help the council a lot. When y'all introduce the budget, did y'all can just give us an organization chart that come along with the budget of the administration? Because I know several titles have changed.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, but yeah, something to update from y'all presented, but I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon for... And we're going to start off with a, we have some materials that have been presented to us and we're going to hear a version of your record.
Well, good afternoon, and thanks for having us. And joining us is the Executive Director of Finance, Bob Holt, and our Capital Programs Manager from Finance, if that works. So I'd first like to open up that I appreciate you calling this meeting to discuss kind of the fleet vehicle status within the city. And I'm standing up on behalf of really what is multiple departments that have a hand in the requirements as well as acquisition, maintenance, and disposition of the vehicles that we use throughout the city. Those include not only Public Works, which is the user of the vehicles and has the motor pool and does the heavy maintenance piece, but there's the procurement piece through the procurement department with administrative services. There's the funding piece that comes out of our finance department. And then there's the users, as I talked about, with police and fire and other departments that use the vehicles. So lots of people have their hands in it, and we'll kind of talk through that. And I'll let Shonda come up in just a minute to kind of run through, would you like to, want me to?
Of course.
Yeah. And to kind of go through this presentation. And then afterwards, and so we can do, you can open up, Councilman, if you have some opening comments of things you're looking for, we're happy to go through the presentation fairly, you know, quickly. And then we can maybe have a discussion after that because you, it may spark other thoughts or questions.
What I thought might be good to start with is a kind of overall statement of the process by which the rolling stock is replaced.
Yeah. So...
And how it's funded.
That's all part of the discussion. What I can tell you is that we've been looking at this for, really before this meeting was called, for the past several months. And it was, became apparent to me that although we have a process, it's complicated. There's a lot of hands in it, and it's not always consistently followed by departments, particularly the requesting departments for the vehicles. So in other words, police and fire may have a slightly different way in which they request the vehicles. Of course, the funding comes from the funding, that's all comes from the budget. Generally, they're all maintained, but who touches it through the process, it varies slightly by department. And we've looked at other cities to look at easier, more consistent, and more efficient and effective manners by which that process can flow. And in the presentation, you'll see there's kind of a chart that shows, and it's not there for you to be able to see it, but you can see the number of touch points in the chart of, in that process, in the different areas. So in the vehicle lifecycle. And so I would just tell you that although we're going to go through kind of the current status, the process that we flow through, this is very much a work in progress in terms of revamping this and relooking it. And so we know it's not perfect today. And the other piece that I will tell you that isn't touched here is one of the big challenges that I've noticed as well in my short time here and our new public service director is also, how about this? You know, inventories are very important, meaning routine inventories of equipment. So doing that and having accountability checkpoints, whether it's monthly, quarterly, semi-annual, or annual inventories, it really helps kind of make sure that the accuracy of the information that we have of which vehicles are in which departments, its current status disposition is accurate across the board. And I would say that because we don't have a good inventory system, and that's not just for vehicles, that's for anything, that I think routine inventories, you know, monthly, quarterly, whatever, that contributes to kind of some discrepancies in numbers. So where one department may think they have X, the fleet thinks that they have Y, and the accountants think they have Z. And so with that, we're actually going through an audit right now to kind of audit all of that to make sure our, the books and the what's on hand and everything is accurate. So that's important as a baseline. So with that, I'll pause, and then I'm going to flip it over here to Shonda and kind of walk through the presentation.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just referring to the audit that you brought up, when is that audit going to be complete?
We're scheduling it now, so they have not actually started. We're scheduling now to schedule the getting of the vehicles in and coordinating that as we speak.
And I think you're all finances, what am I correct or incorrect?
Legal is running it. Legal is running it.
Legal, sorry, legal, legal, my apologies, legal.
Okay, when do they expect that to be complete?
We are not sure, but they should start in the next few weeks. We are engaging well established.
Okay, thank you.
So as of right now, we have documented 111, 1,182 vehicles. When vehicles come in, it's our goal to have them on a five to seven year cycle. Meaning, once we purchase a vehicle, in seven years, they should be rebuilding the vehicle. That is a challenge right now because the time from when you acquire a vehicle to when it is time to repurchase, the price is not going up as to what we accrue into that budget. So what we paid five years ago is not the same five years later. Funds are deposited annually into a motor pool budget. Once those funds, they accrue over time, but they also roll over the next year. The long sheet, the little sheet that you have...
This is part of the operating expense of each department.
In every budget, the general fund, yes. So in the general fund budget, they are given a certain amount that they actually pay into. That goes into buying the vehicle, but it also goes into the overhead of motor pool. Meaning, when you need to put your car in to get tires changed, oil changed, any repair, it goes into assisting with that and just the overhead of the maintenance department. The legal page that you have represents all of the departments and what they actually accrue and what they currently have in their motor pool budget.
Let me ask a question here, let me ask a question here. So we, we have, you'll be giving us a budget soon, and the police department, let's just say, the police department will have an item in the budget of whatever it is, $50 million. An item in the budget of $50 million, and there'll be several lines underneath that $50 million. And where is this sinking fund put? Is that a separate line item that we can see?
It's not, it's in their operating line item. You know, you have, you'll see payroll, and you'll see operating, and the motor pool budget rate is part of the operating.
But that operating is not broken down, so how do you get it?
It's individual categories, it is not.
So what you're saying is prorated through a line item, through various line items?
No.
So is it an individual line item?
All of their operating expenses, their motor pool budget rate, their fuel, their office supplies, all of that is rolled up into what's called operating. It's the same way it's been done for years.
So if I may ask a question here?
If you want to know that detail, we can get that too.
Well, I guess for me, what I'm trying to separate in my mind is how are we, is this being allocated by the budget or is it being allocated by the need? In other words, we've...
It's a little bit of both because if we went by what the department requested, we'd go bankrupt. So we can't give everybody everything. We've got to balance.
Let me just sort of, when I look at the vehicles that we've laid out here, 1,182 vehicles, let's just take fire police, 143 fire, 823 police. Is that the requirement for those departments? Is that what is required?
For police and fire generally is.
Yes.
They are given what?
You're getting at the discussion I had with Shonda and our team that assesses this. We have that with our high team or strategic commissioners team. And especially the military types who've done, you know, requirements generation documents to figure out what's the requirement. So I don't know when any requirements generation or was done at any point in the city's history. I'm sure it was right around some point the police made, do theirs, the fire, I'm confident does theirs very well because they have very specific mission and they know to do our mission, we have this many crew, we have to have this many ladder trucks, this many ambulances, this many this. So the requirements are generated properly, which is what you're looking at. We use the word requirement. So what is the requirement to pick up trash and garbage in the city? How many trucks do you need to do that? What's the requirement? And if you don't have enough equipment to do the requirement, then you'll never be successful, right? So the requirement, that's what generates the need or the demand for that asset. How many lawnmowers do you need to mow them out of grass? How many people do you need to do that? That's all requirements. And so when you use that term requirement, that's how we should really be looking at it. And really, any vehicle acquisition should be geared in that way. That should, there is a requirement, and we need to fulfill that requirement to accomplish our goal or our mission. Again, we're going to go back into that and reassess that. That's part of what we're doing right now to make sure from a baseline, we are meeting our requirements with the equipment. So that's number one in the process. After you've done that, then it is, do we have, do we have that? Or do we have too many? If we have too many, we probably can get rid of some because we don't have a requirement for those pieces. Or if we don't have enough, we got to figure out how to get them. Once you know that, you balance that requirement against the budget. And what I, not speaking for finance, but what I think I just heard Siri say is the requirement, and that's, listen to the slide, outweighs the funding today. So we don't generate enough revenue, or we don't have enough revenue put into that monthly allocation, which is a, which is annual appropriation, to meet the requirements that the departments will submit.
Although we are doing a much better job today than when we were doing seven or eight years ago.
Absolutely.
Much, much better.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that's a good news story. But I would just say broadly that if our goal is to meet a five to seven year replacement cycle for our fleet, we don't allocate enough funding to meet that requirement today in all departments. In some departments, in some areas, we do. In others, we assume some risk and keep equipment longer than we would probably prefer. So for example, an F-150, maybe it can go a little bit longer or have a little higher mileage that we would probably prefer. But maybe we can't do that with a very strategic or important piece of equipment like a pumper truck or something to that. We've got to rotate it out, you know, because whatever, I'm out, I'm not going to be exact. So that's why those first two lines are really important, that, you know, our goal is five to seven years. I can't, I don't think we can tell you today, sitting here, I can't tell you in this presentation, what that delta is between the requirement for funding and the actual, I'm sure they could probably do a little bit of digging because departments submit what the requirement is, and then they, there's a budget that's presented. But I'm not sure that even departments fully know what the total requirement would be if they, if they, if you asked and said, hey, what is the actual cost requirement to do that? What I know anecdotally is that especially smaller departments, it, it's, that system doesn't work. So if you're a small department of five people and you only generate X, you know, it would take you 20 years to get enough revenue to get a new vehicle. So clearly, that doesn't mean a five to seven year cycle, if that's a simple way to put it. In the bigger departments, they can, they can manage it because they can put more money into there, and they can generally keep up for the most part, but not in all areas, if that makes sense. So routinely, in the amount of time I've been here, in some instances, we've had to pull from other funding sources to meet the normal, meet me requirements of, for example, garbage truck replacement or trash truck replacement. We had to buy five at one time, which brings up a whole other issue. Is, in a perfect world, these should be spread out over a timeframe. But this administration, in the early years I wasn't here, 2016-ish, they bought in some cases, seven or 10 garbage trucks at once, which was good because we had a new fleet. The problem is, you can't, you know, you can't do that every, you know, if you have to budget to hit 10 of those at once, it's a huge number. So you've got to start spreading those out, and in doing that, you've got to either start procuring, procuring some a little sooner than, you know, at the five, and some may take eight or nine, not seven. And so that management is really, really important to do. And again, I don't, we're not fine tuned in there yet. We're still working through kind of making sure that we are doing that properly. But it goes all the way back to that requirement generation, what is the requirement? And then can we ensure we be funding to meet the requirement?
And to that point, you know, I just want to stop here and have this discussion because to me, this generates the entirety of the common sense approach of what's driving the vehicle budget, you know, for this. And, you know, when you look at the number of vehicles, it's, it's a large dollar figure year over year. To your point, I want to back up to another thing. When you, when you have a large vehicle purchase, number wise, the problem also exists. You've got to forecast out five to seven years. You're going to have those vehicles all come due for replacement at the same time. So you're going to have, you know, that toad in the snake all the way down until such time as those have to be replaced. Now, you've got a big dollar item in that year, whatever it is. But, you know, for me, what I, what I'm not hearing, and I know you're getting after this, you know, you look at the city, and we were talking about this earlier, the City Mobile Plan. It's a five-year plan, and everything's tied to that, that five-year plan. I would expect to see the same thing, I think you're getting there from the comments that I'm hearing. The same thing for the vehicle processes. There ought to be a lifecycle plan, laying out what the requirement is. What I'm hearing is we don't really know the budget that's coming up for FY '23 that we're looking at. I've seen that we're going to purchase X number of vehicles. And what I can't answer from this discussion so far is what's driving that? You know, there's, is it a requirement-driven process, which we don't know? Or are we just doing it because we think we need, you know, 44 vehicles? What I would expect to see after we get through with all of this is, I should know '23, '24, '25, '26, '27, what our budgetary requirement is of replacement vehicles pending any accidents, emergencies, et cetera, on what that vehicle budget cost would be based off of the number of vehicles we have, the lifecycle, and then the replacement process for those vehicles. Does that make sense?
It absolutely does. And I would tell you, in select departments, the best example is police and fire. They do, fire in particular, I'll say there's probably no one. They have the, they have an absolute definitive plan for their five, their five-year acquisition plan for vehicles, which then translates to a budget, which then you can do, like, you know, these do, like a five to future years defense program or future years, City Mobile program. So you can plan out what are the out years that you're going to see. Public Services is a big user, they have one as well. Again, very anecdotally, I could tell you that the number, if you look at it, it's a very large number. And I would say we probably generally budget about 50 to 75% of that because we just don't have, as Siri pointed out, you would, there's just not enough money to, we couldn't pay our people if we didn't everything that we want to do to meet that five to seven year goal. So we have to temper that and select the ones that are going to be most essential. So assume some risk in other areas. We may not replace all those trailers that year because we can get another year. Maybe we do a service-like extension program where we do some minor upgrades to them, pay them with new stuff, give them another two to three or four years while we invest that money into maybe getting the garbage trucks because they're more critical and we want to stick to that timeline. So again, broadly speaking, if Mark and Kena give me a plan that says in the out years, it's $4 million a year, we need to contribute into that, and that's what we're going to demand to fill our vehicle needs, and we only fund it at three or two and a half, well then, I'm a million and a half short of the, of the requirement, so I've got to figure out where to do that. Again, as a city, we assume a little risk in keeping to push that out. But that's something we just need to, we don't have, I can't speak that we have that consolidated well across all departments. But I know in certain areas, in large fleet areas, police, fire, public services, to a certain extent parks, we have some of that pretty well laid out. We've been trying to drive to that direction so that we have a procurement plan based on departments. To answer your other question about requirements, it's not just we want to order 44 vehicles. If you look, I mean, we know, our operators and our departments know, you know, that vehicle that's got 175,000 miles and it's a late 90s model, you know, that's, we're trying to get that one replaced, you know, replaced. I mean, we don't have any of those, but, but the point being is they know which ones that were tried replaced and need to be replaced. And so we're going to prioritize those in there appropriately. And that's where that risk assessment gets done, kind of, in terms of prioritization. The challenge also is, and we'll get into it in the next slide, is what is replacement versus new? And there's a, new is really a new requirement. So if we don't have a certain piece of equipment and we've been renting it, a five-yard bucket voter, for example, we don't own one, but we've been renting one, there is a requirement for one, and then we have to make, make a decision that we want to buy one instead of renting it forever because we have a requirement, we use it every day, we need one, we should get one. And that has to be put into the budget and then lifecycle costed in. That increases your overall budgetary requirement forever until you no longer have that requirement. And so again, balancing that and looking at that across the entire life of the vehicle is important. And right now, broadly speaking, looking at finance, and again, not speaking for them, we don't meet the full requirements, and I can't give you the full number today.
And, you know, that's, this is one of the things you'll hear me ask when we get to the budget sucker bottom, not just in this area, but in many areas. If we're not meeting the requirement financially, then what I would, will be asking and hoping we can answer is, what's the risk? You know, if we don't do that, then what are we risking by not doing that?
Well, I guess I would say to that question, the risk, the risk of what it means not to have the full requirement really has to come from...
Sure, no, exactly.
And that's really what I think drives this. You know, from my perspective, you know, this, this, this whole rolling stock inventory is really based on needs, based on inventories, based on lifecycle, and it's based on money. Okay? Now, as he touched on it a minute ago, certain departments, maybe because they have an easier time of doing it, and I think maybe the fire department probably does have a little easier time of managing their rolling stock than maybe you do because I think, not that they have less, or not that they have less money, but I think they have a simpler inventory stock to track over a period of time. And they do a great job of saying, okay, I'm going to need this, this ladder wagon for the next six years, and then I'm going to need another one, and another one, another one. Or they're going to have maybe nine of them in the inventory, and they'll get three one year, three two years later, three two years later, some cycle like that. But because I think, you know, they've got a model that they've developed over time, and because I think they have fewer pieces of stock that they have to track, they're able to do it a little bit better. I would say then maybe the next group that does it a good job of it, or a better job of it, not better than the fire department. And I think personally, and Siri, maybe you would back me up, that the fire department has probably the best model. Then I'd say the police department has a pretty good one because they know pretty much how much they're going to use. Those things are running all the time, they know the in and out. And then I would say maybe the most difficult one is Jim's area. And that's where, but it's not just a matter of do you have a model, it's also a matter of money. And, you know, this is a big part of our budget, just like everything else is. And it really, and every department that has a big rolling stock budget, they also probably have a big headcount budget, and they have a big budget for everything else they've got to manage that they have. I mean, ideally, I'd like to say, Jim, it's okay to go out and buy everything you want, but by the way, you still can't spend more than what you have, well, now let me carry it for your budget. So the only option really is, is Jim has to kind of enable what he can go out and buy and try to make it all fit, or he may not be able to get to a point where he has that situation. Maybe this stock doesn't turn the same way that the fire department's does. I mean, maybe this is more unpredictable, and it probably is. And so that makes it more difficult for him. But the bottom line really is, is that I would like to get everybody to the point where they feel fully comfortable with it. Not overly comfortable because then we're not spending money wisely, so, I mean, intelligently, but, you know, where we can do that. And, and then it comes down to, okay, how are we going to reallocate all of our money going forward to make sure that we do it? And I think we try working with Jim, and I know Jim, Jim has some specific requirements every year that he wants, and we probably can't get them. The only place we can get them is to start spending our money a little bit differently than we, that we do every year, which means taking it from some other place and putting it there, and in Jim's area, and some, and taking it out of someplace else. That's kind of how it is.
We'll keep pressing on this, but Bob brought up a couple of points that I think are also important to highlight is, you know, the reliability also is, you know, easier on certain fleets, less on others. If we switch and transition to a new vehicle type, sometimes we learn that that truck or that engine or that thing wasn't as reliable as we thought, and it may move up that cycle, which then throws out of whack the five-year funding plan. That's happened. In other cases, we may have more accidents in certain areas. Police has a lot of accidents, we try and fix as many as possible, we outsource some. But in many cases, they're totaled, and that rate changes, you know, maybe not drastically, but it changes over time. Some years more, some years less. So that impacts that predictability, not drastically, but it has an impact on it. So at any rate, in pure fleets, you know, we've transitioned from a Caprice to a Tahoe fleet. We're still just finishing that transition. We don't know how well that's going to, you know, is it going to be as reliable, more reliable, less reliable than the Caprice? Well, generally, you'd think Tahoe's been around a long time, you'd probably think it's going to be as reliable, but we don't know until we get one cycle in there. Maybe it's lasts longer, maybe we say we can, you know, max stop at seven instead of, you know, the other. So, and things like the Caprice fleet, which we had to transition because they're no longer available for parts only in Canada and Australia or somewhere. So we can't, you know, we can't get those, we had to make that transition, which may not have been in the plan long. So lots of variables in that. But let me just hit a couple of highlights, and then we'll keep going, because I know we, there's going to be a lot of discussion. If you don't mind, I'll just, I'll just look through this. The, the maintenance plan, the administration's goal also was to do a, trying to extend warranties to reduce the amount of maintenance that we had to perform and to make our fleet overall more reliable. That's worked well in certain types of equipment, it's not so good in others. More, some of the challenges, again, anecdotally, that we've had is, you know, when we go to take a vehicle in for warranty for maintenance, you know, you're, you may or may not be in the queue with other people gave their vehicles worked on, and that can slow things down. So in some instances, we found that we can bring some of that maintenance back at house, some of the routine maintenance, and not necessarily have to do some stuff outside. I've probably thrown in a few things there. So oil changes and things, we also went to contract with that, and we're trying to transition that back in house. It's a simple thing. But warranty stuff, I mean, any vehicle warranty would be covered, you know, covered for all vehicle stuff. But we've actually, in some instances, paid certain fleets or types to extend that warranty so that large scale maintenance stuff can just be covered and not have to be back on the city. I don't have all the data on that. I think we'd probably have to look and pull some data to figure out the analysis on whether, how well that's paying out those fleets, procurement and/or our fleet, folks may have some data on that. The, I may let Don and his team talk a little later about statewide purchasing plans and, and so that there's existing things. So we have a pretty good idea, barring, you know, this last year or two, vehicle prices have gone through the roof and availability has come down. That impacts, is going to for sure impact our, our plan for the next several years. But they do have a bid list, and we have a good idea from a budgeting standpoint, and that's one of the attachments you got in there, to have, know what a typical vehicle would cost. Specialized vehicles vary, and they change over time. So Vector trucks, Fire trucks, there are examples where if you order a vehicle in advance, you pay for it in advance, you can get a 10 or 15% discount. So from a budgeting standpoint, police or fire in particular, if you're buying a million dollar fire truck and you pay cash upfront, and it's going to be a year to get it, you may save 15%, $150,000 if you pay for it upfront while they're building it instead of waiting. And we've done that in instances to save money. And those vehicles sometimes long lead time. But from a budgeting standpoint, you need to budget well in advance so you have that in that prior year's budget so it can be produced and then it shows up a year later. If that makes sense? So it's, it takes some planning to make that happen. That's why for fires, even more. That's why for fire, it's even more important that they have a five-year plan, because they have those replaced. The new versus replace, I kind of touched on that. New is a new requirement.
Let me just ask one question. Going back to this eleven-hundred-and-eighty-two vehicles. Says we have eleven-hundred-and-eighty-two.
I, I haven't seen this presentation before today. The county has a list of vehicles, is that where y'all got the numbers?
No.
Okay.
We got them from motor pool.
Okay.
And, and, yeah.
After the audit, we'll give y'all the list, the, the final list.
And eleven-eighty-two, actually, there's an error in that, that was a prior number, so we add those up, I think it's actually fifteen-oh-two, so I apologize for that typo on that one.
Well, my reflection, if we call it, is that eight or ten years ago, we had two-thousand vehicles.
This is why we're having the audit, because we want a reminder list.
And again, if we.
Makes sense, because eight or ten years ago, we had, had a little shop.
Right.
Right.
We still have a problem with repairs being on. Part of the rationale for having a newer fleet is to have fewer repairs, but we haven't seen that happen.
That's disappointing.
It is a little bit, some of it, some of it is, I think the vehicles, for the most part, are more reliable than they were. I mean, we used to have an engine in a transmission shop, and we used to rebuild engines. Engines did, if an engine lasted a hundred thousand miles twenty years ago, that was a big deal, maybe a little, not thirty years ago. Now, it's just expected a car's gonna go a hundred, two hundred thousand, you know, not an issue. So they are generally more reliable, transmission's the same, but there's other components and other things that you have, normal wear and tear. And from an accident standpoint, it's also a balancing act between what we do in-house and what we send out, and, and those rates and everything have increased to get any of that kind of work done out of house. And so, again, from a budget standpoint, we have to also increase our budget at the same commensurate rate. If we keep a flat budget there, and the body shops are charging us twenty, thirty, forty percent more, well, I mean, it's not gonna add up. And vehicles are more expensive now than they were, and every year they're going up, and they're really going up now. So from a budget standpoint, you know, our money is not gonna go as far, same way with construction projects. So the three million dollars per council member CIP is gonna do about two million dollars worth of work from, you know, two years ago, if that makes sense? You know, you really, I mean, that's just the way it is, so we've gotta really look at that across the board and see, if we keep it flat, you're not gonna be able to get as many vehicles replacing as quickly. New versus replace, I think we covered that. New is a new requirement and a new piece of equipment. Something comes out in the market, geez, we could really use one of those, we bought two side mower pieces of equipment in the past year, you all approved, to try those out, to see if they're better. That's a new requirement, new, new piece of equipment, was not in our inventory before. A replacement is, it's an F-one-fifty, you know, eight-foot bed, and we're just replacing it. It's up for certain replacement, it's seven years, it's got a hundred and thirty thousand, we're just turning the old to get the new, and it's a one-for-one. On the acquisition process, let me.
One, one question on the new versus replace, who is the authority to approve new vehicles? What is that?
So any vehicle replacement should come through the executive director himself, any, any vehicle, or Lawrence, and for police and fire should come through for them to approve. And so ultimately, that's where the requirement comes through, and then, of course, the city council's the final approval. Any purchase of any equipment comes through and you, you actually approve it. But prior to it coming on the agenda, procurement and the executive director has seen it, and it'll come up here for your final approval.
And then it should be approved through finance.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Within the budget.
Yeah, it's, if the budget's there to support it, it's, it's gonna get, it's gonna get approved. On exceptions, I mean, if the budget, you know, you're, they, finance has approved the budget, you've approved the budget, on the exceptions like a fire truck where we're saying, hey, we need to frontload some money to buy and get that fifteen percent discount, then we may move or reallocate funds to try and make that happen if it wasn't planned. But ideally, you plan that in probably in the budget.
Why are we on a, why are we on a topic? Because that was a question I had. I, I know we're getting ready to buy you all, come to the city council, but we're about to sell, and where do that money is, we going to? You know, when you sell like the, the vehicles.
We're, we're gonna get into that here in a second. Yep, at the end. That's all John, he's got, we got it, but we'll talk about it. So the acquisition process, there's many steps. I would tell you, I think we can streamline this, I think we need to standardize it better. It hasn't been formally written down, and it's not consistent amongst all the departments. So we're in the process of cleaning that up, so it's not perfect right now, but it works, we, we make it happen, as you can see, you've approved many things. But I don't think it's as efficient as it could be, and I want it to be more standardized so that we can track it better and account for it better, budget for it better. But bottom line is, vehicles are requested, a requirement comes up, it's requested through the motor pool, and it's approved by the executive director. And, you know, we're gonna, the, the director and executive director's gonna make that approval based on the accrual rate, can we afford it, is it, is it in the plan, and can we afford to do that? If we can't, then, you know, obviously we have to have a discussion. Shows here kind of the approval process, motor pool manager, deputy fleet, once it leaves the department, so if engineering says I need a vehicle, and it's approved by me, it goes, it goes, or approved by that department head, it goes to the motor pool manager, the deputy fleet, Charles Sumrall, motor pool manager back here with Diane. Charles, from a maintenance standpoint, he's overseeing the fleet, he's also making sure that, hey, this is a new piece of equipment, do I have mechanics training on that piece of equipment, do I need to get training, do we need certain tools? So he's seeing it and doing some research on it too, from a maintenance standpoint. Then the director of public services, Mark, will take a look, I'll, I'll review it, finance will prove it, and then finally, purchasing will then make sure, and then they'll do the actual bidding out or get off the state bid list, and they do the piece, and then it shows up on the agenda. So that's kind of the wickets that goes through before it comes here. But the generation at the very beginning, that the requirement generation in that department is important, and it's not the same in each of the departments, and that's where we want to make sure that's tightened up. The specification list, the other piece, there's a lot, there's a, a lot of back and forth, and, you know, if it's an F-one-fifty, it has no specification change, you just order that. But if it's a new piece of equipment, then procurement, before they can put it out to bid, will ask that department, tell us what the specs you need on that piece of equipment. Do I need a five bucket, a five cubic yard bucket loader? And then it has to have, be able to do these things. So they may have to write the specs for that so that they can bid it properly and get the piece of equipment. And if you don't bid it precisely enough, then, you know, you might not get the piece of equipment you thought you were gonna get. And specs generally are reviewed, how often, Don or John? Every year, as needed?
As needed.
As needed. But, you know, we generally don't make, like a garbage truck, we're rewriting the garbage truck specs to make sure that they're good. I mean, you'd think, well, it's a garbage truck, it's just standard side loader, just, you know, but we make sure the specs meet the city requirements that we want, maybe our peculiar needs or things that we have, versus just a generic garbage truck. We don't just say we need a side loader, it's gotta meet our requirements. Some of that has to do with operator familiarity, some of it has to do with maintenance, some of it has to do with reliability, some of it may have to do with visual markings, other things that we wanna have a consistency. So the specs, there's, there's sometimes a little back and forth, it could take thirty days, even longer, to get those specs written right, and they change based on new technologies. Departments work with procurement, oh, I already talked about that one, and then they're bidded, they're, the purchase through a bid, co-op, state contractor, other purchasing department, purchasing's here to answer any questions on that. And then on the last step of the process here, five through eight, we're replacing the car, old cars are, you know, are turned in, so if it's a one-for-one replacement, the vehicle being, you should drive down your old vehicle, the new one's ready to be picked up, you get in it, move all your stuff over to it, you leave the old one there, and it stays in the lot for, for disposition. We'll talk about where they go, that the, they're prepared for a resale, I'm not getting into the details of prepping vehicles and all that, there's a whole process in that, and we could talk more about that. In some cases, we, generally, we sell them on govdeals.com or whatever.
Govdeals.
And so they're just up for bid, and people come, bid on them, and then they, they buy and take away. Instances, we've actually transferred them to other municipalities, if we, we've done that by exception in rare, rare cases where we've transferred them at little to no cost to another municipality, is kind of a favorable municipality, we've done it to a few around here, on a few pieces of equipment. And govdeals, and then that money, the funds collected, and that's used for future vehicle purposes, from a financing standpoint, do you want to say more on that, how that works? So the revenue generated out of govdeals goes into a pot, I don't know the details.
Motor pool.
Hmm?
Yes, motor pool.
Motor pool pot, and then it helps to offset future maintenance operations costs as well, procurement costs. So that's kind of the process, and the graphical view of that is this, which is very convoluted, it's a lot of steps, and we're trying to streamline it, and I've probably hit the high points. Some of the things that I'll, before I get to the last slide, that I'll also mention is upfitting or outfitting, so when we get an F-one-fifty that comes in, you know, there has to be a, a tag put on it from accountability that the motor pool puts in, they actually pop rip it in a tag for, with a city mobile number on it, they have to put the M sticker on it, they may put a drive cam system into it, there are certain things from an upfitting standpoint on almost any vehicle that we get, that the motor pool team does, and any new piece of equipment. When the vehicle's done after five or seven years, you have to take all that off before you put it out in the yard to sell on govdeals. That's done by, generally by our employees. On the police vehicles, that's a contract, and you all just approved one not too long ago for about five hundred thousand, when we had about forty-four new Tavos coming in. Those go out to a third-party vendor, then upfit those with all the stuff that the police need, then they come to us, and then we do our piece, and then it goes out into the operation. So just to be clear, there's kind of two processes. From a downfitting piece on the police vehicles, that's done in-house with a crew that they have, so when we're ready to dispose of a vehicle, a police vehicle, we do take it all apart, take all the things out of it, and then send it over there, so that we salvage anything, radios and all this stuff that you take out. What about transferring vehicles from one department to another?
Hold on, just a real legitimate question first.
So, in general, I know this isn't your area of expertise necessarily, but all city assets are ultimately under control of the governing body. Is there, shouldn't there be a determination that this car or widget or whatever you're getting rid of is no longer needed for municipal purposes? Or are these sales taking place? Or, because I don't really remember that happening.
I mean, yes, I suppose, you know, if we, if we have a, a vehicle, we have a garbage truck that caught fire, burnt up, and, you know, that the whole, that means destroyed and is, you know, and so we made that economic analysis determined, could we, should we repair it, or should we get rid of it? And then that decision's made, and that we're not gonna repair it, the cost of that versus getting a new one wasn't that different, so we're gonna, we're gonna get rid of it. Someone may come and buy it, salvage the back end of it, but that decision makes no longer value, it can't operate. So that decision's made on a truck that's got two hundred thousand miles on it, and we know it's no longer usable for us, someone may want it for some reason, but it's not of benefit to us, then we, you know, because it's well outside our five to seven year window, it's got the mileage that we exceed, in other words, the maintenance of that would be more than.
I, I get somebody's making the decision, but I, I've always understood it was the council's decision, just like selling a piece of land.
Yes. Well, I, I would just say, the management of the turnover, the cycle of the vehicles is a departmental management piece, that five-year plan is laid out. The approval to do it is the city councils to buy them, is obviously your, your approval. But the sale afterwards, again, I mean, I don't know that we've had that discussion, I'm, I'm looking at Don and John back here, because that's really their lane, but I don't, I mean, clearly, we've never come to you and say, hey, we're getting ready to sell this on every single item. I mean, so we can, you know, that, I guess that's a discussion.
Sounds like a serious question.
Legality of it.
Y'all might, y'all might wanna talk about that.
Yeah, we, we can look at it, but, any comment, Don?
We can talk about it.
Okay.
I'll explain it to you later.
Okay. All right.
I'd like to ask a question, Mr. Williams. Transferring a vehicle from one department to the other. So say, example, the, the use of a vehicle, say for a, whatever department is, a hundred thousand miles doesn't necessarily hurt them to use a vehicle past a hundred thousand miles, whereas, say, another department where they get real heavy use, they really don't need to go past fifty thousand miles or whatever. Do we transfer assets from one department to another department and get all the use out of them to offset some of this cost?
Yes, bottom line is yes. The trick is, is then doing the transfer and the accounting of it from a, you know, it's now on this department, they're responsible for it, that also becomes an asset, and then you have to budget, they have to budget for that. So we have a new department, programs or product management, six people, they didn't have new vehicles, you know, they go visit a lot of projects, and we were paying mileage for people driving a personal vehicle, that, you know, only makes sense for a certain duration, we're like, hey, you need at least one vehicle you could share, tool. Initially, the vehicle was just transferred to another department that wasn't utilizing the vehicle enough. So what we do look at, and we run a list every so often, we pull a few reports down and see, because that's where you can tell how much a vehicle's being used by asset number. So I can look and see that asset one, two, three has only taken in forty gallons of fuel in the last year, it's not getting used, I, you know, and it's got the mileage on there, it's only done two thousand miles. Well, then we go back and say, hey, you, you clearly, you're not using that vehicle enough.
So it should never be a new vehicle.
That, it may not be new, but also you may not need that vehicle, it's showing you probably don't need that vehicle, you need to assess, and if you can't, then we would look to redistribute that asset to someone else, another department that may have a need to prevent us from having another vehicle, if that makes sense. So.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah, go ahead.
Carol.
Thank you. This vehicle lifestyle, styles, everything I've heard to talk about it so far has been operations, but budget impact, what I'd like to see, and I don't know if this is it or not, but if we've got a thousand, one thousand plus cars, right?
Eighteen hundred probably.
All I wanna see is a, a list, I wanna see aging, keep, sell, purchase new. If I can't, if I don't know how many a year we have to purchase new, then I don't know what the budget should look like for the next year. All I see is you're talking about a thousand cars. I have no way of telling right now with this information how much money should be in the budget for what cars are needed next year right now. All I see is one thousand one hundred some odd cars. So you tell me what I, this, that do me any good. What, what I, what I would like to see is a list that shows me how many cars need to be purchased next year, next year's budget, how many cars are in the year after that budget, what we have to sell, and that way, I can clearly see what, what needs to be in that lineup of the budget.
Number one, I think we were talking mostly process here, to think, okay, that, we can.
I mean, operations is one thing, but budget is another, and you're clearly talking operations versus budget. I mean, this is a finance committee meeting, I wanna know what we have to spend and what needs to be in the budget.
We'll, we'll get to that, I understand.
Oh, so what's the point of having a finance committee meeting? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that.
What we, what, what we wanna talk about, my understanding, what we wanna talk about is the process by which a rolling stock is replaced.
Yeah.
And the impact on the budget, both of those.
So.
I have no idea.
We'll work with finance and try and pull together from an operational standpoint, I have to get each of the five-year lists from the departments, put that together, and then have finance, we can compare those numbers to come up, we can come back with the data. Here's what the, you know, request would be, and here's what we're planning on funding, which is some percentage of that. I can just tell you right now, it's not a hundred percent.
Well, Deputy Director, with all due respect, I, I really appreciate that, and I look forward to it, but, you know, I, again, it's, I don't know what I need in the budget, and I don't know how much, if I wanted to adjust the budget as a council member during the budget process, I have no knowledge of how to do that based on what I currently have.
So.
Mr. Chair. I do want to go back, we just wanted to ask a few questions. When we talk about the funds collected for the sales, I'm curious, do we have the number for this FY on the dollar amount that we have sold back this year?
I have to pull that, I don't have that right at the moment.
All purple?
I do not have that currently. It's a all purple, about five hundred thousand, somewhere in there.
That's what was logical.
So, and, and there, I guess that's my, my question is, are y'all, do we have enough of a data point there year-over-year to have any idea of what you may have to help offset the operational cost? You know, so what that looks like?
Yeah, we could, we could.
Five hundred thousand's significant dollar, you know, year-over-year, so that helps me understand the dollars associated with that, thank you.
Oh, final slide here, just to kind of go through, and then we can answer any more questions, which is the kind of upcoming actions and things that are, that we're looking at. We've already talked about the audit that we're doing. That's really to get the numbers straight and again, apologize for the math error on the first slide, but the number should really be like 1502. Again, there's, there are discrepancies between what the motor pool fleet team thinks that they're maintaining versus what the department thinks they have and versus what the accountants think. So that's why we're doing the audit to make sure those are all straight. The, we're looking at other city examples to streamline and standardize our process for the acquisition and management. As you just pointed out, Councilman Jones, we're reviewing the funding levels to support the requirements, so we want to, you know, to be able to tell you definitively, hey, we had a request of X, the requirement is Y and that delta is this and here's the risk we're taking. We're only funding at 75% of the level of the requirement and if that's the case, then we, you know, we're deferring 25% of that acquis, of those, that requirement to the next year and that has a compounding effect. So, you know, so I think Councilman Carroll's point is well taken and we're reviewing that and we can pull that data up. It's just going to take a little bit because we really have to look at each department and see and it's buried in there for us to be able to do that. It may not be as well laid out in each department, some do it better than others.
Thank you. I mean, it'll be great because then I can actually justify what I'm seeing on the agenda really and what we're spending on. We actually knew what we were...
And, and you, like me, like to be able to check off, if I see this year we plan on buying four garbage trucks, when they come forward, I'm ticking them off, you know, there's two and then I know there's two more coming.
No more.
And then streets reaper, we're going to get, you know, whatever. So I'm looking at that list as it comes through to make sure it's on the plan and that we have basically budgeted for.
Yes.
Or that we didn't and then that item is not there. And if we come into some money or above, you know, excess funds, whatever, then I'd say, oh, we didn't use all the money we thought, let's go ahead and buy those other two things that weren't on the list, we couldn't do originally. And that happens actually more frequently than, than planned. We're also looking to standardize a fleet where we can. That helps, you know, it's for example, the Tahos and the police. When you standardize fleet, it makes it much more cost-effective for us to maintain it. We stop tires, we stock all brakes, all the things to be able to do that more efficiently and effectively. And then we are working on developing a plan to transition some of our fleet, the ones that are logical, to EV, looking with an eye towards the future. So we've only, you know, we may have one electric vehicle here, so we will at some point, the garbage truck. But we know that, that car manufacturers are moving and some of it can be sort of be 100%, so they're moving that direction. We're not going to have a choice at a certain point but to go that. So we want to at least plan, so we're working between our residency officer, our motor pool and, and others to look at what's the right vehicle fleet to target to do some selective purchases in the upcoming years to do that transition and have the infrastructure in place to do it. We don't want to be caught short-handed and, or be the last ones to dance in terms of making that transition.
Especially when they're going to be issuing grant money and stuff and we get half price on it.
That's right.
Where's the obvious, if you know of one, shortcoming with vehicle replacement now amongst all departments? Is there one, an obvious department where we're falling short?
Jason, what, you know, as, as a strategic initiatives guy, you know, he, Jason really looked at the whole process, you know, and spent a lot of time. Where would you say is the shortfall if you were looking across the process?
Yeah, so I would say it's similar to your concerns or your questions about how do we budget for these things? I think when we brought all these groups together to talk about the overall process, they're all very intuned to what they do in their own silos. But I think one part that was sort of overlooked by the overall group was how to tie the purchases to the goals of the city. What are we trying to achieve, therefore what are the requirements for those vehicles? And now comes the improvement process. So I think linking those things together is going to answer your questions as well as make the city more efficient.
And, and again, I go back to the big, you know, the, the largest procure of stuff in the world is the Department of Defense. They do it very well. They have whole teams that do nothing but that. And, you know, they don't just buy a new thing, they have small departments that buy just those things, but generally they're not buying a new thing until they, that requirement is generated and they say, yes, we're going to need that thing and then they go through that very deliberate process. If, if the police just told Diane, we had this requirement and, and it, you know, without it being kind of vetted, obviously it's going to come through here and she just went ahead and bought it, but maybe it didn't get the, you know, full rigor of going through the requirement and the need balanced against the other needs, then, you know, that can get things out of whack. It's just because they have the money doesn't necessarily mean it should, you know, and I'm not picking on them, I'm saying any creative department.
Or the appropriate disposition for those assets.
Right.
Like on a replacement can be evaluated as part of it as well.
That's right.
So where is the biggest need right now?
So, and, and Celia, Celia brought this to my attention, when we were looking at this year's, you know, planning for this year's budget, fire department, what, what we had budgeted the previous year certainly would not meet their, their need for replacement of assets this year. So there's a slight increase in that area to adjust to make sure that we're able to meet the need of their replacement items. The police on the other side is as similar, you know, when we started this process, Mr. Days was here, but when they started replacing the rolling fleet within the police department, the money they set aside was about 3.2, 3.4 million dollars to replace 100 vehicles a year. That 3.4 today only replaces about 70 vehicles and two, two, two to four motor units a year. And so, you know, if, if there's a decline in the area where I see, and, and from the public safety side, it would be in the ability to use the money that we begin this process with to replace our rolling fleet. That decline has taken us from 100 down to 70 vehicles, 30 vehicles shy of what we need. And I think Mr. Lapp spoke of this, is that not necessarily always by, by fault of the officer, there are a lot of accidents, a lot of reunion collisions. When we changed our fleet from, from the Ford Crown Vic, it was because they stopped making the vehicle. When we changed our fleet from the Caprice is because they stopped making the Caprices and so we went to the Chevy Tahoe as a result. I'm seeing that there are a lot more Ford products being ordered if we're going to standardize our fleet. I've always succumbed to the idea that if we're going to standardize our fleet consistently across the board, even on the public safety side, we need to standardize it. But I have to know that we're changing from one type of vehicle to another type of vehicle for, for me to be able to assist and support in those areas. But, but again, if you ask me where there the deficit is, it's going to be in, in, right now, because we needed to do an increase to make sure that the fire department was able to get the assets that they needed to stay on their procuring track for fire vehicles. That would be one area, then again, on the police side. That we've got to start looking at if we're going to stay on the trajectory that we set to be able to probably replace 100 vehicles a year. We went from 100 down to 70, that's 30 vehicles shy. And that does not include when we have to replace a wrecker or we had, when we had the animal shelter, we had to replace animal shelter vehicles as well. And every now and then a horse trailer or something like that that needs to be replaced, we have to add that in. But we always make sure that whatever our budget allocation has been, that we, we won't replace a, a patrol vehicle in order to be able to acquire some of those other assets.
But then we go from, but when we go from a Caprice that's say 25,000 to a Tahoe that's say $70,000, is that contributing to the reason we can't replace a 400?
So first of all, Caprice was never 20,000. The Caprices were very expensive vehicles and the maintenance on those vehicles, in particular the Caprices, I mean, if you, if you did it a bumper, you were looking at almost $3,000 to $5,000 repair costs on, on doing a bumper in a Caprice. Now, the cost of a, of a Tahoe today, it started out, we were about 34,000, we're at somewhere close to 40,000 on the standard pursuit package, package, I believe, Tahoe. So there's somewhere between, we went from about 34 to about 40. And then when you look at the outfitting package.
But, and let me just, with, with, with recent, with recent, you know, stuff, any vehicle, particularly pickup trucks and things, they're extremely hard to get, the costs have gone up. So in some cases recently, we've purchased some vehicles that maybe we would have said, eh, we, we would prefer to have a Chevy Tahoe, but we're going to get a Ford Explorer or Ford whatever because they're available and we can get it and we can get it at a good price of some business and it's available. Because otherwise you're going to have to wait another year or two. We've opted to do that in some instances. We're trying not to do that that much, but in some cases we've had to do that.
Well, that was one of my questions when y'all were talking about trying to standardize everything, you know, are you able to standardize, are you assuming to go for best price in what's available right now and does that mess up your planning and your processes throughout the system? One other thing from what Director Bautista was talking about, so since the police costs are going up with your vehicles and having to replace and that sort of thing, how then do we work with motor pool in order to have enough budget to provide what the police department needs? Because that's generally where the funding source is and within the department itself and then with motor pool?
I'll get you the exact numbers from the police because I believe it's gone up to 3.2, I don't exactly have it.
I think it's 3.4 now.
Yeah, yeah, it's going up a little bit.
But to answer your question, it's not just the police vehicles, all vehicles have gone up in price, right? So all, all vehicles since the original budget strategy was developed have gone up in cost. I don't know, we'd have to do a comparison to see, has that budget amount gone up at the commensurate rate with the vehicle or has the vehicle rate gone up and the budget has stayed maybe slightly flat? So 3.2 to 3.4, 200,000 dollars, but if it's still a half a million short, then it, you know, whatever.
But we have less officers now than we did, unfortunately.
Yeah.
So maybe it sort of works out. Just one other thing on, we were talking about sales of vehicles and rolling stock and all that, when, when they are sold, the funds go where? To motor pool? Just go back to motor pool.
So I want to do, I want to share some of the other challenges to go back to Ben's question. So the other challenge is the window of when you can purchase. So for example, I'm not purchasing with Sharon, that they have a short amount of a window of when it is open to buy vehicles. So you have to have all the funds ready and all of the things ready for when you want to buy during that window. Once that window closes, you cannot purchase again. And that's where they're stuck with trying to negotiate locally. The other challenge too that public services have is that most of their items take a year to six months to prepare. So if they wait a year to purchase, they got to wait a whole nother year in order for that item to be ready. So it's being able to have the funds early on, a year ahead to be planning, a year ahead, actually almost two years ahead, to be able to get those vehicles that take that long to be ready that they got to outfit.
And candidly, our departments historically have not done that well, but it also hasn't taken as long. So we're having to retrain ourselves to say, we've got to actually be budgeting a whole year in advance of when we think we're going to have that requirement and get the money that year so that we can put the order in, knowing we're not going to have it till next year. Once you get into that cycle, you're okay, but we're kind of in that transition right now on certain types of vehicles and equipment. So that's an extra challenge and that's all been happening in the last 18 to 24 months.
So if I can ask a question in relation to the purchase window, when is the purchase window?
All right, purchase window is going to vary depending upon the type of vehicle. The police Tahos, for example, the window for sale was open eight hours this year back in May. So we had to be ready for that. Right now, the purchase window is open for most of the Ford products until which time Ford decides they've sold enough government agency vehicles and they close it off. It used to be it opened up in October and ended in March, April, but the way it's been with the vehicles now, they've shut this thing all the way back down. For pickup trucks last year, it was open in October and pretty much ended in November. So it's, you know, it's a strange thing to say that, but that's, that's what we're having to deal with.
And that's off the state contract list?
Off the state contract list.
But so then what we wind up doing is, you've, you've approved some is, you know, then we say, well, there's four vehicles at a local dealer that are available, they meet our requirement, we didn't get them in the window, we can get those, let's go ahead and get those now. You may pay a little bit more because, you know, you're not getting off the state bid list at the bulk discount rate, but if they are available and it meets the requirement, then you've, you've at least stopped, you know, the issue in that area for a little bit or, you know, to have a placement.
Okay, we're in the question, we're in the question session now, we'll start with Councilman Carroll with the additional questions.
I'll ask the only one I need to hear.
What else?
The only one I need.
Councilman Small?
I'm just curious how much money that the city received from selling of the vehicles for this past year, if that can just come to us.
All right, it's around 500,000 dollars to sell the vehicles that we did last year. Now, it depends, what we get depends upon the condition of the vehicle when it's turned into, to the motor pool to dispose of and it gets to us. Some of the equipment is stripped, cannibalized, we don't get much for. The Crown Vics used to bring us about $1,000. The Caprices are bringing us around $3,000 to $5,000 because they're operable, because they're, the fleet, the police department decided to move the fleet out of the Caprices, so they're operable. A lot of the Crown Vics were already junkers, they were shot, they were worn out, they didn't run.
And the, the engine in the Caprice is like the same as a Corvette, so they buy it sometimes just for the engine.
Yeah. Big trucks and stuff, if they're fully functional, we'll get $20,000, $30,000 for the vehicles. This varies upon what's turned into us, so I know it's a strange answer, but that's...
And some are wrecked, some are burnt, and we've had a garbage truck burn up. Again, the back end, the, the compactor part was still good, but the entire truck was terrible. So, you know, someone could take that and dismantle, take the compactor off and do it. For us, it just wasn't cost-effective and we opted to just, you know, get rid of it and get a new one. But we'll get some value on that piece and maybe have gotten value, that, that's an example.
And the other part is also what I was going to lead to earlier before I would turn and mention, you know, about, I know that the properties come back to us, you know, when you get ready to sell it, but you know, as far as the vehicles, you know, I would like to know, you know, what is your definition about the vehicles come back to the council before, you know, we, we sell it, you know, what y'all come up with, you know?
Okay.
Any else?
That's all.
Mr. Reddy?
No, I'm just, I think this has been a good process to go through for, for all of us because really that's where most of the questions were coming from. How do you do it? Why do you do it? How many cars? You know, how do you sell them? How do you decide all that sort of thing? So, so the process is good and obviously we will see the results when we get the budget and allow everybody to start ticking off every garbage truck that comes before us. So, you know, I appreciate your work and I just think that, you know, this helps everybody make sense of what exactly goes on with our vehicles.
So can I add? So we are going to revamp the process.
Oh, and so you've got to do the revamp, the process, revamp it, the revamp.
So right now there is, it is a very disjointed process and everyone here has been a part of the process and agrees. So if you look at, I think it's like the fifth page, it taught, we went through what the current state is and all the different touchpoints and it's all over the place. And then we're talking through the challenges. The next step we're about to go through is what should this streamlined process look like? And also from the very beginning of the conversation is what's the requirement? Who should approve that? And then so that everyone could look like police and fire and, and public services so that we have that list ahead of time and we don't have that at this time, we're not doing that.
Yeah, it is quite the task for you all to do that with all the vehicles and all the people, all the people involved and all the uses involved, so it is, is quite a daunting task. So thank you for streamlining.
I do think there's, there's more work to be done in accounting for all the vehicles that we have in our inventory and what conditions. And, you know, it's ironic that you all called this meeting because we had been talking about having an audit done by Locust Miller, as she said, just really verify just where we stood. Because, you know, there is money out there that we had in every department, including mine, that we need to capture. And nobody captures it is the measure and that's what we intended to start doing and that's what we're going forward. But I, you know, I will say this, I mean, I heard you, William, say that, that you wanted to destitute finance meeting and by all means it should be to a degree because, you know, we're paying for it. But, you know, every department owns these vehicles, every department is responsible for the vehicles and every department is responsible for replacing the vehicles and to accurately reflect what their needs are. And, you know, I can't go out there and determine what they need and what they don't need. I can just determine what they're using and what they're not using and that's kind of what we want to do the audit for. But I think, you know, like I said, we've got some stellar players out there in managing this and we've got other areas and I think part of it is due to complexity and part of it is due to how we allocate our money that maybe struggle more than others and that's what we want to try and, and try and improve.
Scott? Thanks, Mr. Chair. And thank you all, this, this, I know it's a lot of work and, and this is not easy work. I, I do this every day. When you start looking at, at budgets and allocations, and, and just to use that as an example and, and why I ask the questions I do, getting back to Jim's Department of Defense discussion. The Army lays out, I deal with seven munitions systems. In the budgeting process, they have what's called a total army munition requirement. Let's say there's 25,000, there's throw out numbers, there's, you know, we need 25,000, you know, Hellfire missiles for the Army at, at large. So every year we expend X number of missiles. So the Army's got to go to Congress and say, I need 300 missiles, it's going to cost $68 million. Congress will come back and say, we're going to give you $60 million. Okay, so we've got an $8 million delta. It's up to the Army to come back and say, what's the cause and effect of that $8 million cut? Where's the risk? And, and then that discussion takes place with the senior leader level and they'll either give them money or they'll say, we're not going to give you any money. What drives that entire discussion is laying out the requirement, okay? I don't want to hear about dollars in the police. I want to know, we need 850 police cars every day in order to do our mission, okay? And that costs year over year to get back to the budget piece, which William's asking about. We need X amount of dollars because we know we're depleting the fleet by X cars this year by either attrition, by wrecks or whatever. And we've got that data and that, that's the hard part of this, that's, that's baking the sausage in this thing, right? But that's where it leads to our budget discussion and lays out the numbers. And then if we say, well, we need, you know, those, those cars are going to cost us at the current cost $3.2 million or $6 million, and you get $4 million. Okay, so we're not going to be able to buy 13 cars, we're going to buy 10. Okay, where's the risk to the police at that point? That's sort of the thought process that I want them to have that discussion when we get to that budget cycle. But it's not the dollars that should drive that, it's, you know, we need 14 garb, we've been doing this long enough in the city, we should know, we need 14 garbage trucks to do what we do on a daily basis. So there's your discussion point for me, is do we have 14 garbage trucks? And if we don't, then what's not going to get done in the city? And then what's the cost to fix that and is that budgeted or not? So there's, when we get to budget time, there's where I am going to be approaching things and.
We're at budget time.
Pardon?
We're at budget time.
Well, well, it's going to come to us here at the end of the month. So those questions.
We'll meet Friday.
Yeah, those questions, that's, that's where I'm in tune is, you know, where, where's the risk for the city based on what y'all are recommending? And those are the types of discussions that, that I want to be having. Because to me, that's, you know, where's the risk to the city on that budget if we're not meeting the requirement?
And to, to your point, just, and we've talked this in the departments, if you don't do it and you're short and you say, we're not going to get four vehicles this year, we're only going to get three, with that fourth vehicle you didn't get and it's now at eight years, not seven, and maybe nine when you're going to get it, I now not, I may not be budgeting for the replacement of it, but I have to increase my budget in the maintenance because the maintenance of that piece of equipment is probably going to go up. So it may need a new engine, it may need this. So then from a detailed budget statement, what you need to uptick that maintenance on that piece of equipment to make it, to make sure you're covering it, and that should be in there. Unfortunately, we're not that precise in it, so we're not good at that level, but it winds up biting us at, at the end.
Yeah, but your general requirements are, God, I'm talking, the general requirements are somewhat less than a, a, a general condition, you understand what I mean by that? So in budgeting repair, you do the same thing as you would for each department in their budget. You put a certain percentage into the budget every year for repair. So, I mean, that forecast, it, it's, it, it has a, I guess, a variant that, that fluctuates because it's not going to be consistent.
Correct.
You know, it's not a constant.
That's right.
But the replacement is, is, you see, so we're either going to lose or we're going to gain on a maintenance budget. But on the pla, placement budget, we know exactly what that is.
I would, I think it's been a very good discussion, I appreciate you all doing this. I, you know, my, my fear, and it's probably founded, but I just remember 89 years ago where we worked with a rolling stock. And, and it, we were, we were in this absolute horrible hole, deep dark hole on rolling stock because we hadn't managed the process physically sound manner. And we ended up with, as I've said before, police reserves with 180,000 miles on them that were constantly in the shop. And, and we started this process, so it, it, what I, what I hate, first, we need to, we need to have a process that allows us to replace these vehicles at the end of their life, whether that's years or mileage, or however you measure. We need to have a process that allows us to replace these vehicles at the end of their life. And we need to stick to that replacement plan. And we don't need to fill gaps from capital, we need to pay for it in the, in the, in the general fund. And so those, those to me are the three really important things we need to be doing because if you don't stick to that, then you're going to end up down the road with a bunch of rolling stock that won't roll. And you're in the same hole we were 29 years ago. And the only other thing I'd say is, my interest from y'all is knowing that we have a plan and a process and that we are adhering to the plan and the process. Now, we may have, Mr. Partridge raised the issue, I don't know what the legal answer to that question is. I personally don't want to sit here, week after week, deciding whether you sell dump trucks that have 200,000 miles on them. But we can get into that later on. Anything else? Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.